I gave it on the steps of my church in Marin County, which is a predominantly white community in California. And it says this, "I came to speak tonight for a particular reason. It's because this is my community. There are many places in the world which have expressed outrage, upset, and despair. And there are also people in the world who do not understand the upset. They don't get it. It's important to me that here in Nevada, in the midst of a very predominantly white Marin County community, that you get. The rallies, the protests, the prayer vigils have been occurring throughout the world and also here. And it's not because there's violence in the world. And it's also not because we need to be peaceful. And as horrific as it was, it is also not simply because of Mr. George Floyd. It is because it began when a people who were fluent in their own language and had several dialects and had their own process of governance, the arts and agriculture were stripped of their family and livelihood. Someone put a figurative knee around the neck of black human beings and made them slaves in America. It is because the entire history of black African Americans has been consolidated into the shortest month of the year, teaching about the same 12 to 13 individuals as though they are the only ones who have contributed to the fabric of the history of America. They put a figurative knee on the neck of African American history to be taught as an elective. It requires that European history is taught as a major, but that African American history is only an elective. It is because you saw Mr. George Floyd get murdered underneath, and it shocked America. But as upset and outraged as I was, the greater outrage was that it's not new to me. It's in my gut. Because Mr. Floyd's death was not a one-off. His life didn't matter to the officer who murdered him, nor the officer who watched. He was one more black man. Two days before, there was a man whose name is Maurice Gordon, who was shot four times by the police as he waited with the police for a tow truck. There were no cameras. Americans didn't know. All lives should have mattered, but his life did not. Eric Garner, who was wrestled to the ground over a path of cigarettes that he did not steal, said 11 times, "I cannot breathe", while lying face down on the sidewalk. His death was ruled a homicide, but there was no indictment. Eric Garner's life, his black life, didn't matter. Black Lives Matter is not a term of confrontation or an exclusionary domain. It's as Professor Kimberly Crenshaw puts it, "It's a rallying cry for a shift", in the statistical numbers that show that people who are black are twice as likely to be killed by an officer while unarmed compared to people who are white. It's a cry for a shift in the millions of African Americans who have died at a rate of 7.2 per million, while whites are killed at a rate of 2.9 per million. It's a cry for a shift in the racially unconscious mentality that says that the problem is the people and not the policy. It's a cry for a shift in understanding that although we all may have struggles, there is another layer that black people go through, that black people have carried, and historic and horrific struggle in many cases, solely, solely because of the color of their skin. It's because of things like when I moved into a house in 2017 and a neighbor knocked on my door and greeted me with the original bylaws of the Homeowners Association into which I had just moved that said, "No colored people allowed". Black Lives Matter. Black Lives Matter is a cry out in recognition of those who have kept the pulse on the black human condition, from the transatlantic slave trade through the civil rights era, through being murdered for trying to learn to read and write, and for running away from someone who had just lynched your mother, and the ongoingness, the ongoingness of the deaths of black individuals to this day. It's a cry that we need to stand up and we need to protect black bodies. Because although the centuries-long stain of American history says otherwise, Black Lives Matter. So that was the information that I shared at the beginning of a peace video. Because I hoped that the community would be able to understand what it means, the difference between saying "all lives matter" and how it dilutes the issue that black lives historically have not and need to. And so I'm curious if there's anyone who has comments from the panel about that, as you heard those words, and then I'm curious if there are comments or questions that have come from the people who are listening.
So right now, we don't have any comments yet, so I just want to remind everyone that you can access the chat box. There's a little chat icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, and there'll be a continuous chat going on there, and we have people monitoring that, so thank you for that. And we're happy to bring your comments and questions and experiences. And if you'd like to talk, there'll be an opportunity for that as well. So Kitty would like to add something? Go ahead, Kitty.
I just want to say that the first time I heard the term, and probably the first few times I heard that phrase, "Black Lives Matter", my initial reaction as a Montessori and was, as a human, was, "Well, all lives matter." That was my initial reaction. Because I didn't understand what it meant. I didn't understand what Cindy just explained. In time, I did. I think, I just want to say, I think it's normal for those of us who are caring human beings who work so hard to teach how precious all life is on the planet to think, to maybe have that initial reaction. But we have to look beyond that to understand what this is truly saying. It's not saying, "Black Lives Matter only", it's not saying, "Well, all lives don't matter and only black lives matter", it's that cry. And I've read, you know, in some of the Facebook posts, "All lives don't matter until black lives matter", you know, "until all lives really do matter", and that's what has just touched me so deeply to realize how painful it is for our black and brown brothers and sisters to have felt for so long that their lives don't matter, and we have to change that. Thank you, Cindy, for explaining it so beautifully.
You know, what's really, what's really hit me hard this past week, Cindy and everyone, is that it's one thing to be outraged by an incident, it's other thing to educate yourself that this is a longstanding pattern. And history has been so incredibly skewed to prevent us from understanding, these are not one-off incidents. These are freestanding patterns. I just want to cite something, this wonderful book I've been reading, "Tell Me Who You Are: Sharing Our Stories of Race, Culture, and Identity", somebody on our task force recommended it. I was shocked this morning when I read this as an example of how history has completely been distorted as to what's going on. Before European colonization, scholars estimated that Americans indigenous population to have been anywhere from 50 million to 100 million people. After colonization by 1650, the native population declined to less than 6 million. When I read that the indigenous population before the white men arrived was 50 to 100 million, it was like, what happened? Where was my history course? So I think it's so incumbent that we educate ourselves on what really occurred, because the one-off incidences are symptoms of a much larger issue. That's really hit me hard.
Yeah, absolutely. I have given an example before in attempting to explain it, because I see that someone in the chat mentions that "all lives matter", and it's kind of like if you go to the hospital for an emergency situation and you are bleeding from your head, and you get into the ER, and many things have happened to you. You've hurt your hand, you've hurt your cheek, you've hurt your feet, and the doctor starts to bandage, give a Band-Aid to a part of your toe. And you say, "Well, no, that's not the issue. The issue is my head. I really injured my head. My head is what matters", and the doctor says, "Well, all of you matter". And "all of you", yes, does matter, but there's a part of you that is in serious condition, and that's your head. And in the moment, that's what matters. And the totality of human history tells us, yes, all lives should matter, but the totality of human history also says that black lives have not, that day after day after day, black lives haven't. And that's the reason for the cry, because they have not.
Thank you, Cindy. We do have a request. Is there a way for us to share a copy of your speech? Written speech? Is there a possibility that we could have a copy of that? Would that be something you'd be interested in sharing?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, and then a couple other questions here. Cindy, Erin says, "Thank you. I'm having a difficult time getting this across to my assistants in my children's house classroom. Any advice?" And I think this is specifically related to the "all lives matter", and I don't think that that is very unusual, unfortunately, right now.
I think it is providing information about history, not what we've learned in history, because that history is inaccurate and that history has been silent or it has been hidden. But to be able to show the history of what has happened to black people over the course of time, and also to hear their voices, and to be in their community. It is, when I first started my school in Alameda, the very first day, I opened the door and parents came in. There was an open house. And the very first day, everyone walked by. And I literally had my hand out to shake hands, and people were looking for the person that I was going to direct them to, as opposed to me, because I couldn't have possibly been the person who was the head of school. It is very typical that when people introduce me as a speaker, that they say, "Oh, and she is articulate", and some of that is definitely a compliment, but some of that, it's like, is that a surprise to you? I don't quite understand that. It's like, things continue to happen, and those are mild things. Those aren't challenges that have happened over the course of history that are serious. That's the day-to-day kind of operation. What happens particularly to black men is a continual assumption of who they are and how they are, this assumption that black men are going to be violent. And I have had to train my son to put his hands up on the dashboard if for any reason he is stopped by a police officer, and that's very real. And I don't feel that fear for other friends who are not black, but I definitely fear that for my son, because he is a black male. And his friends won't even come to the community that we live in because they are afraid of having some kind of poor treatment if they come across the bridge into our area. And so I think it is really opening someone's eyes up to history and allowing the voices of people to speak. If you just look at the pictures of the history of slavery and what came out of it, and what came out of desegregation, and that those kinds of things still exist and people are still mistreated, then you start on some level to begin to get it. Sarah has sons. Sarah, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
You're still muted, Sarah, hold on.
Okay.
There you go.
I have two sons. Both are biracial. One identifies as black and has dark skin, and one passes for white almost all the time. He knows he's not. He knows who his birth mother is. Both my sons are adopted. But what's interesting is watching them move through life and the different way they are approached. And it just shocked me. You know, as an adoptive mom, I thought love was the only thing that matters. I was raised in the 60s and 70s. I didn't get it until I lived it with my two boys. And to see my one son calmly get his driver's license and move forward, and the other son at 21 still saying, "No, you know, I'll get stopped. I'll get harassed", you know? The first time he was harassed, he was 14 for carrying his lunch in a brown bag to school. And he was stopped on the street, and the policeman said, "That better not be beer". He was 14 years old on his way to school, you know? So it is true that all lives matter. I want to go back to that woman who said, "How does she help her teachers get it?" It's worth a workshop with your teachers, and I don't know where you live, but exploring that question, to invite them to set aside their disbelief that it's true, and just do some research together. Listen to some stories. The book that Jonathan mentioned is a great book. It's a textbook written by two college students where they literally just interviewed hundreds of people across the country to get their stories, because you don't know who people are until you actually talk to them. But I think, I want to go back to just making sure that, what Kitty said, you know, she didn't get it, and then she got it. And so it is a process that is worth giving, you know, a three-hour to a full-day workshop with your teachers. And I would bet that, you know, we could help you find good leadership in your communities that could help you facilitate that kind of conversation, because it's really important that people get this fundamental belief. It's not capital B, capital M, capital L, capital M. So it's not that, you don't have to talk about it as a movement. It's talking about it as a plea. It's talking about it as a state of fact, that right now, we do not demonstrate equally across the board that all lives matter. And until we do, we've got to be looking at those disparities, just as analytically as we look at anything else.
Thank you, Sarah. Jonathan, can you put the name of your book into the chat?
Just did, it's already there.
Oh, thank you so much. We were thinking the same thing. Because I think many people, so tell me who you are, and it is in the chat. I also have a couple other questions and some comments. Maria Clark says, "The same thing happened to me". So Cindy, when you were talking about opening your school and having people walk past you or look for directions, she says, "The same thing happened to me. As I was walking with a new child to my classroom, somebody wondered if I was his nanny". I have heard that comment from a number of people, people of color who have been assumed to be the nanny.
Yeah, it's interesting. I put a phrase out in the conversations and the dialogue that are inherent within the leadership training, that a section of it that I'm doing for CGMS. And that phrase is "cultural recontextualization", that people talk about having anti-bias curriculum, and that is what is going to help. And I get the pushback of anti-bias curriculum, but I really think that we need to re-figure how we look at culture and how we look at how people are, that we need a cultural recontextualization so that we can understand that as the world gets browner, that we have many people of many different cultures and cultures within a culture, and races that are intertwined, colors that are intertwined, and that people are not in the box that we have put them in historically, and that we have to look at that and recognize that.
Thank you. Mary says, "It wasn't until I watched Eyes on the Prize and read Howard's In in my 30s that I learned the history". So I think there are some, my son, when he was in high school, told me, "Read the People's History of the United States, and you cannot run a school and not have students reading this". He brought it to my attention. And we read it, and we implemented it as part of the curriculum at my school. So I think that there are things that we can do to educate ourselves and help our staff with, you know, book groups and professional development opportunities, like Sarah was speaking about. Nirveer says, "Children are living in a world where they pick up cues that all lives don't matter the same. They need to know what the reality is, as well as our hopes and dreams for equality".
They do, and we forget that they do listen and they do watch, even if we don't say it. They do see how people are treated differently and how we treat people differently and how our own ideologies play into that. And they follow suit, often not because they even know, but because they've just copied what they've seen.
Yeah. Tracy, Tracy Halls here. She says, "I'm curious how you respond to people's anger when ups say this is true", I'm not sure what that means, "their rejection of the idea of implicit racism or white privilege and their anger at those of us who speak up about it".
You know, I recognize the ignorance of people who haven't done their work, who don't know the history, and who have really deep embedded ideologies that have come from childhood. And I recognize that, and that's what has allowed this to be as widespread as it is and to have the longevity that it does. And so I understand it. I understand where it originates from, and I understand the need for education for people just to continue to speak up and to push back.
Cindy, which goes perfectly to David Ruckper's point in the chat, "Awareness of oneself, reflection, etc. is vital. We can't forget the spiritual preparation of the guides, because unconscious bias is very real. It has such a stronghold on me and many others".
Yeah. I do think that the unconscious bias is huge. And I just wanted to speak a little bit about the white privilege part that we're sort of working around here in that it's hard to, want to go with an understanding of the Black Lives Matter when you feel personally invested in your own, the work you've done, right? So I clearly am a white woman. I have a lot of white privilege. I can proudly hold up all my ancestors who were working abolitionists. But it's really, really hard for me to hold up the fact that I have ancestors who came over in the early 1700s and some in the late 1600s. Sorry, it makes me cry. I have shame about this, because I know they were slaveholders. And if I can't face that and use that to work towards understanding what is in my DNA, what might I have been raised with, what my mother was raised with, her mother, my father's parents, goes on back. But I know that I have been raised in a genetic pool of privilege, that if I don't accept that, if I don't stop being shameful about that, if I don't stop taking it personally and take the work of correction personally instead, I'm doing myself and the world a disservice, because I need to get over that. That's that white fragility part, where my pain or my shame is more important than the pain that is being caused to a whole population of people. And I get protective and defensive. As Ibram X. Kendi writes, he says, "Denial is the heartbeat of racism". And that's such a, I mean, when I read that and it said that heartbeat, and I thought, "That's exactly where Montessori comes from. We come from the heart", and if we think about denial, denying that these things are true, denying the wrongdoings that have been going on, we are perpetuating the misinformation, the hurt, the problems of our society. We're just not letting it heal. We're keeping that wound, that festering wound, healed over. And so we've got to be brave. We've got to be brave. We've got to take, you know, the Harvard bias test. I'll put the link in a moment. Take that test. Reveal what is inside of you, what you might have grown up with that is holding you back from seeing a painful truth, that not all people matter as much as others right now.
A few other things, and we have a lot in the chat, so I'm not taking everything, but we will be continuing to monitor and get there. Michelle Becca, "Hi, I'm an AMI primary trainer at MNW. We have been doing lots of class sessions on Abar, the anti-bias, anti-racist, as an aspect of spiritual preparation and intellectual preparation of the guide, and how to ensure one's CASA includes all people, colors, religions, etc. It has been a wonderful elevation of teacher prep. And I don't think we can say enough about how this is going to be very, very much about how we change teacher preparation courses and continued professional development for those credential teachers that are out there to have the biggest impact in schools, to lead schools, to lead parents, to lead the children, and sometimes to lead their heads of schools with a new way of thinking and looking at things. So thanks for sharing that. I think all of us who are involved in teacher education programs have a unique responsibility to move quickly, and not just quickly, but thoughtfully in how we address this issue. And Sarah, thanks for putting the link in there. Everybody can see the link for the Harvard Implicit Bias Test.
I just want to say, I think we should talk a little bit about white privilege, and Sarah mentioned it. But I also want to say two things. One is that anti-bias is not a thing that we could ever have, because we all have biases. It's a part of humanity. It's just who we are. We look at someone's dress and we say, "Oh, that's too short for her", or "She really doesn't look good in that color. Why didn't he dye his hair?". I mean, we just, we do that as human beings. And to deny the fact that we have a bias will not allow us to see our biases. And so it's an ongoing work, and so is anti-racism. It's an ongoing work for black and white, brown people, everybody. It is just something we don't reach, we don't pass through and get the certificate, and we're no longer an anti-racist. It is something that we always have to continue to work on. And Sarah said something about heart. I can't remember it, but I do say to people that in this work, heart work is hard work. That's what we're doing. We're doing heart work, and that that's hard work. And if it was easy, then we probably wouldn't really be reaching the depth of where we need to go. But we have to do the hard work. So I want to just say what white privilege is not. It's not the suggestion that white people have never struggled. There are many white people over the course of history who have had struggles and who have not enjoyed the privilege that has come with affluence or who don't have the food security that other white people have had. There are many people who are white who have not had access to healthcare in the same way. So it's not a disacknowledgement of that. And it's not the assumption that everything a white person has accomplished is unearned. There are many people who have worked hard to achieve the success that they have had. And it's also not- And it's also not racism. Um, because white privilege is something that definitely exists. It doesn't mean that it has to be held as, as, and, as a weapon, but it can be. And that's why it's important to be able to know it. Um, but what it is are a few things. Um, I think that it's probably a given that most white people who have been here in America for a long, long time have assumed their citizenship. But citizenship didn't come to black people until, um, years later, until, until the sixties actually was there, was there actually a piece of legislation that, that on the books allowed black people to be considered citizens, which is just shocking. I mean, it's just shocking to me. Um, and it's, it's also having greater access to power and resources and not even realizing perhaps that you do. Um, that just by virtue of the color of your skin, that that's something that is inherent. It's being able to walk into a store and to discover, well, maybe not even discover, but that most of the brands of shampoo or most of the brands of things that have to do with makeup are geared for a particular color. And that that color is the same color that you are. That, that's a privilege. Being able to turn on a television for many, many years and to see more people of the color of your skin than any others. So much so that when you see a lot of black people, that it's, it's surprising. Or in Indian people or Asian people, but it's surprising to you to see someone who is First Nation, person who's, who's on, and, and that's the majority of the people who are on television. It's not having a different feeling when you walk at night that the police will think something of you. Perhaps having the feeling that someone may steal something out of your purse. Um, but not that the police are going to accost you because they may think that you look differently. It's being able to move through life without racial profiling or, or unfair stereotyping. So it's something that's unconsciously enjoyed, consciously perpetrated, but, but not even conscious often to people. The struggle, um, is different. How does that hit some people just in hearing some of that information?
We'll open it up if you'd like to be, um, able to speak or if you would like to put something in the chat. And while you're thinking about that, Sarah has put some resources, although also, uh, we had a request for a recommended book list and, uh, Rachel, thank you, shared a, uh, uh, link to resources for everyone to, to utilize. And, and Nicole, uh, thank you for putting, she, Nicole put a link to a speech that Martin Luther King gave that I don't think is very well known. I, I watched it recently because it was shared with me as well. Eleven months before his assassination and it's a very, um, thoughtful speech to, uh, listen to. So there's many, many, um, resources in the chat and you can, on the bottom of the chat, you see three little dots. If you click on that, it will give you the opportunity to save the chat and then you can make sure that you catch all the resources and links at a, at another time as well. They'll be downloaded to your desktop. Uh, so
As a quick, as a quick note on that, sometimes we get knocked off of these things. And if you're seeing a chat in Zoom and you don't want to lose it, grab it periodically, do it as many times you want. And of course we save it. So if you, if you ever are on one of our calls and there's something you missed, contact us and we'll, we'll get you that.
Yeah. Uh, so there's a couple of comments here in response to what you're saying. Uh, Cindy, Nirveer says, we live in a Montessori bubble of well-intentioned, peace-loving and kind white people who have a hard time accepting the need to confront the privilege that allows us to live in the bubble. We worry about protecting the innocent children from the concept of racism when the children of color in our classrooms have most likely, sorry, I lost it because more people are writing and it moves. Um, we were protecting innocent children from the concept of racism when the children of color in our classrooms have mo- most likely already experienced it in some way.
Yeah. And, and I think, you know, I think that it is important to understand that white privilege is just something that is. It's not something that, um, people need to, need to beat themselves up over. It's something that you, i- if anything, use the right, the white privilege that you have for good. Um, and just recognize that it, it is something that has, that has been carried in society for, for ages and ages. And I think I need to correct myself because I think I said, um, black people got citizenship in the sixties, eighteen sixties. In the seventeen hundreds is when it was clear that anyone who was a white male was a citizen of the United States. Um, in the eighteen sixties became the very first Civil Rights Act that said that a black person could be a citizen. Um, and then that citizenship got added to in the nineteen sixties, um, nineteen fifties and sixties by allowing that those citizens to vote who were black.
Thanks for clarifying that. Uh, Brenda, Brenda says, sounds like, that sounds like truth. I didn't understand my privilege until my child and my, my friend's black child became teenagers. His mother shared all the ways she had to prepare him to be safe in the world. Thank you for your work. Mary says, think, uh, think most important is how we can recognize our own prejudices and are ready to step into other shoes. See the world from another's eyes.
Yeah. Can I share a story around that?
Please.
Um, I had a very, very close friend, um, who said to me one day, um, that she was telling me what country in Europe her family originated and when they came over. And I commented that I was telling her about my family and when my family came to America from Sierra Leone. And so she said, wouldn't that have been something if they traveled over together? If they were both in the same ship or something that brought them over and they, they traveled over together and came to the United States together. And I said, no, no, that couldn't have happened that way. Your family probably traveled over to America. My family was chained and dragged over to America. I don't think they did it together as, as friends.
Important distinctions.
Yes.
Maureen says, one of the most powerful things I've heard in conversation with staff is, quote, white people need to know that if you want to engage in an honest discussion about race, prepare to have your feelings hurt. Talk less, listen more.
Hmm, hmm.
I think that the, the discomfort is, is okay. Right? This, we, Cindy, you and I talked about this. Can, can we be bold? Can we help people look at this that might create some discomfort? And can we create a safe place where it's safe to be uncomfortable?
Yes, yes. And can we create a space where even after we start to get information that the uncomfortability will keep coming up as we learn more things? And, and can we give ourselves some grace around that? So, so that we can make mistakes and so that we can learn. Can we step back and look at the, the black and brown children in our classroom and recognize, recognize when another child is saying something to them that is inappropriate, that we've glossed over before and can we not gloss over it, but just learn from it? And say, I made a mistake. I made a mistake. I didn't recognize that.
And, and the most important is to not gloss over it the next time. Take those opportunities to, to set things straight because children are, are, are learning. And when you don't say something, when something is done in a classroom that is inappropriate, and it's uncomfortable, to, to say nothing is, is truly to endorse it. And we don't, we don't want to be endorsing those things. We have to be brave enough to say something.
Well, Sarah, and that's such a beautiful counterbalance to what you said before. It's like, am I glossing over this or denying it? Or am I over-personalizing it? It's neither of those. It's look at it and, and, and take a close look at it and inquire and to be bold enough to have somebody tell you their story, you know, and be uncomfortable. But it's neither glossing nor is it like, oh, you know, I must be this horrible person. No, just don't go in either of those directions.
Right. Tim is, had his hand up.
Tim.
Hi guys. I, you're doing beautiful work. I, I don't have much to say, except I really appreciate the, the dialectic that one, we really have some listening and learning to do. There is no white person that has anything to teach here. All we can do is, is be humble and learn. One of the things that I want to remind us is what we're trying to do is to find a way forward that really resonates with the truest Montessori spirit of, of the circle of equals, the, the peace table, being able to be, of seeking partnership and honesty and, and shared experience and even grief. One of the pieces, very small pieces, ultimately, we were also going to have to talk about is like the dichotomy that Montessori entered America for the most part and still lives in America for the most part in the non-public schools. One of the great myths of Montessori is for white, middle and upper-class kids. And compassionate white people who, who really don't want to do any harm and haven't got any clue of what we're doing, that's also true. So I think we're going to have to look at the, as we go forward, one of the conversations will have to be the ethics of how we understand why non-public schools have a place to play and how we go forward with kindness and compassion and, and serious commitment to social justice. If we believe that for us at least, we want to work outside of the state school system, which all different conversation.
Yeah, I think that educators particularly are in a position to be able to change the course of history um, and the racism upon which it's the bedrock of, uh, of our educational system and, um, that we can change that by trying to make, make room, find ways that we can incorporate, um, other children of color to be in Montessori schools. Um, I, I can remember, um, sharing my story about how I got my education and someone saying to me, it was so ridiculous that my parents didn't know about college. Um, and it, it's not ridiculous to me. It, it is my history. And neither did my parents' parents or my parents' parents' parents. Um, and it's not that they didn't know that college existed, but they didn't have the way in. They didn't have the access, um, to be able to do that, nor could they give it to me because they didn't know. And so it wasn't until for many, many years of finding out that I was able to learn. And so, um, we, we, we hold the keys now for black and brown children to be able to participate in an incredible form of education. And we shouldn't, we shouldn't sidetrack that and not pay attention to that because that's something that we can do.
Uh, Cindy, um, Aparna has a really powerful questionnaire, if I may read it in the chat. I teach adolescence and a well-meaning mentor made the case for why the students should not be enlightened about the unappealing horrific details of our history, lynching, internment camps, et cetera, so as to not make our white students feel guilty. How can we present history to educate and not make anyone feel guilty?
You absolutely cannot. Um, and, and, and I say that because, because things happen and we do feel bad. I mean, that's a part of feeling bad. And it's not that, it's not that people now need to be blamed because they don't. Um, we need to hold accountability for, for what we do now. And the, the number one way that you, that you do that is by first educating people, is opening their eyes. Um, I, I wrote a play, um, about desegregation, um, called Words That Made the Difference, Brown Versus the Board of Education. And we had a man who was, um, I cast him as one of the judges. And he was practicing with us, rehearsing, going through the words. And at some point he stopped and he said, um, you need to understand that I, I don't believe this. I'm a, I, I'm a very, I'm a conservative, um, very politically conservative individual. And he did not believe that the things that have been said in history about Martin Luther King and all that he has done was something that affected the rest of the world. He thought that it was just local to where Martin Luther King was living at the time. Nor did he believe in, um, all of the, the historical information about slavery and racism and difficulties. And so he said, I don't know if I should really be in your play. Um, and I thought the same thing. Maybe he shouldn't be in the play. But over the course of time, as he continued to read information and to be with the other afters and to learn more about what has happened over the course of time with racism, it changed him um, incredibly. And he did feel bad. He did feel bad. And so, um, I, I think that that is a part of the history, um, is, is to say, wow, look what happened to these people. And that is really unfortunate, but it's not me. And it's not how I will be from here on. And that's the wonderful thing about enlightening is that it also empowers children to be able to say, no more. I, I will change the course of this history. And so I think it's how you frame it, um, and empower them to be able to say, this occurred, but this is, this doesn't have to be who you are. Um, you can, you can flip the switch and you can change all of this.
Well, and Cindy, isn't it also important that, that to expect that, that children, students who are learning about these, these horrible things that happen to human beings of color, that they, in the spirit of emotional intelligence, the teacher should be asking, how are you feeling about this? Let's talk about feelings. You know, I mean, you don't want them to sit with, with guilt and blame themselves, but you've got to let them process it out.
Yeah. Yes. Yes. As a, as a child, when I learned about slavery in school, I felt horrible because what I thought was that my ancestors were people who were stupid, that they were so stupid that they couldn't take care of themselves, um, that they couldn't speak up. And so they just were passive people who ended up coming over to America and then mistreated and that they didn't learn how to read and write because they couldn't learn how to read and write. And so, so, so if, if a teacher could actually provide that kind of information for a child of color, how about providing the accurate information for all children so that they can learn the truth and they can learn how, how they can be of value to each other?
Yeah. We have a couple of people who've had their hand up for quite a while. So I want to get to, um, first David Ruppberg, and then we'll go to Michelle Becca. So David, if you could unmute, we'd hear from you.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm here at our school. We opened up, we've been two weeks open and um, while all this is happening, it's kind of, it was back Cindy earlier to what you were saying. Um, so it's a little off topic now, but I was thinking about the beauty of what someone referred to Montessori schools as the bubble that we're in. And I, I get that. Um, and of course we sometimes hear like parents say, oh, I want our kids to go to the real world and you know, they need the real world. So they'll leave from middle school, like all those things that we hear. And yet I sometimes think, how much of an opportunity is this for our families and the kids that we are serving every day? And the parents that we are honored to work with every day and work alongside with in saying that this isn't, this doesn't have to be a bubble and this is the real world. This is what we want the real world to be. You are actively participating in what the world could be like. And if that could be not only a teachable moment for our parents and our, the students, but also I just, I just see Montessori as such a city on a hill in moments like this because this doesn't exist in our, our context. When, when we're, we're doing the Zoom and right now I'm with one of my colleagues who's from Venezuela. At one of our extended care staff, African-American male. from Venezuela, one of our extended care staff, African-American male, another colleague from Venezuela, a Caucasian woman, Hispanic chef from Mexico, all these things that we're like, what, what are you talking about? Like this doesn't. And, and we definitely have our own things that we always have to work on and we have to keep each other accountable to those things. But I just think of the incredible opportunity for us as Montessorians to say, this is what the world could look like in all of these environments. This is what peace looks like and this is what, and of course, we're working on it together. We're having these uncomfortable conversations that cause us to grow and cause us to continually do good, whatever good is, we just can't stop doing what's good. And so I just, I hope that to a certain extent, we can come into the classrooms either in the summer and the fall with the mindset of we are making such an impact in these small ways. And I, I don't know how things can happen other than grassroots movements organically throughout time and throughout space. You know, whatever that means, I, I, I just think that we have such an opportunity to show people what it means to literally be a microcosm of interconnected people that mutually love and respect each other. So that's.
Thank you, David. And I think we'll go to Michelle Becca next, right? If you're still here, Michelle.
Thank you. Yes, yes. Thank you so much. I want to express gratitude and love to Cindy Acker and to the people who arranged this. It's my first time coming to a town hall and I'm going to come as often as I possibly can. I found out about it from an equity group that I'm a part of that came out of a AMI refresher course in Seattle. So I'm really happy to be learning here. Two things I want to say, one is a comment in the comment box about how learning a history can be painful, which I think is true. And what somebody here said is resonating with me, what my yoga teacher says, that if we can, the pain of stretching or of growth, if we can recognize that actually as a sensation and not have to name it as something pleasant or unpleasant, but to exist with it as a sensation that indeed is temporary. And as we move through learning about our history, that experience of discomfort through knowledge can be shifted. So that was one thing I was thinking about. And then the other thing I was thinking about, Cindy, you mentioned using white privilege for good, which I'm really interested in. And some of the, my friends on social media who are white talk about, there have been some comments lately about things like, oh, I, I'm so grateful I don't have to have the conversation with my adolescent white child about what Cindy you described and Sarah you're talking about with your sons, how to keep your hands on the dashboard, how to keep your hands inside at all time, how to not reach into your pocket when approached by a police officer, what to do. And so what I wrote back is actually, you have a responsibility to have a conversation with your white child too, that, and that's what I want to, my suggestion for all of us white folks is to encourage our parents to have conversations with their children about how to be an ally to their Black friends who are being targeted and how to speak up when they see injustice happening and how to talk about, you're white, so an officer's going to approach you differently than your friends who is a Black. Why is that? What can we do to change it? And how can you help your friends who are Black to, um, to be safe? So thank you again for the opportunity to talk. I'm so grateful to you all. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here, Michelle. And if you'd like to put the link to the equity group in the box, people might be very interested in that.
Yes, it would be my pleasure. I'll do that.
Very much appreciate that.
At a rally that I attended, there was a white woman who had on a T-shirt that just, I mean, it stopped everyone who looked at it and it said, "I know now, I will not stand by and let you die." And I thought, whoa, whoa. And she spoke and she said, "I have learned that, that my white privilege needs to convince me not to be a bystander and that I will speak up and that I will speak out every time something comes up. And that is my commitment to what is going on now."
Thank you. We have a couple of hands up. I'm going to go to Eduardo next. Eduardo, if you could unmute.
Thank you. It shows that my internet is unstable, so I don't know if you all can hear me, but I just want to share gratitude for this, want to share gratitude for what I've been hearing. I'm thankful to be here with you all. I just wanted to respond when David earlier was sharing about a comment that was mentioned about the Montessori bubble that we live and exist in. And I was full, wholeheartedly feeling exactly same sentiments that David was responding to. And it made me think of a quote that Buckminster Fuller had shared about changing, changing a structure or changing a system. And I, I've just posted that quote in there. And essentially, I think that our Montessori efforts, that our education are essentially creating another working structure that demonstrates what the world could be like, what the potential could be like within the structure that we're trying to essentially replace or reconstruct. Essentially, I just wanted to share that. I, I posted that quote on the chat.
It's very similar to, you know, Einstein and I'm paraphrasing, you know, we can't solve today's problems with the thinking that created them.
Yeah. And I would say that within that, there are things that we really have to look at as Montessorians. It's like peoples of the world are not peoples of the world as we know them now. And they, they are different and we need to provide that wide open view to children and we need to give them truth about how the world is now.
Thanks. Janet, Janet Huger, if you could unmute, I see your hand is up as well.
Yes. Good afternoon and I will, I'll show my face also. First of all, let me say, I thank you guys for inviting outsiders to your space. I am an educator out in Brooklyn, New York, and I am constantly seeking knowledge. So I came across this particular timeframe and said that I must show up and just kind of see, you know, a different view, if that makes sense to you. And your, your candidness and your openness during these conversations from all parties is so appreciated. I, I also just want to kind of step in and say, you know, comfort is important, right? Meaning we have to be okay with who we are before we can begin to fix it. We cannot fix things if we're not acknowledging who we are. And just sitting in and listening to you speak on, on, on all angles, everyone that had something to say, we have to make sure that we are aware that no one truly sits with the answer at this point. And we just need to do the highest form that is needed, which is validation. And for me, being a Black woman who has had every aspect of leveling in this world, the openness is the necessary part and just validating who we are first, because you have to start with self and then from there, be able to step in and begin an empathetic process. Meaning I would not have to ask, does Black lives matter if I understood being Black, right? Like just starting from that aspect and just kind of opening up conversations from that angle and then following it up with the, the definitive why. Whenever people are feeling certain ways, because there has to be a granted reason why. And just validating every aspect of it. There's no right and wrong when you're feeling something. There's no wrong when you have a thought and just, just, just stepping in and making sure that that point is clear. I just, you know, I felt moved to raise my hand at the last minute, but I appreciate you guys a lot. I, I read a lot. I am not a Montessorian in, in its, in its title, but I do understand and believe in a lot of pieces that is equated when you're talking about a school. I lead a school of Black and Brown children in East New York, Brooklyn, and your message is what I deliver daily, you know, in regards to who they are and what they are to expect from anyone that they're coming into contact with. So, you know, I dare to cross the line today, if that makes sense to you, because I want to be able to take the message across and to allow others to know the great work that's happening in other spaces. So thank you for your open invitation and the opportunity to listen and learn. Love you guys a lot.
Janet, you won't, you'll never be an outsider with this group. We, we love, we love non-Montessori voices. They give us a perspective that sometimes in our Montessori bubble, we don't have. So please join us frequently.
That I shall. I appreciate the invite again. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Janet. Thank you for being willing to, to come and to speak out. We, we appreciate your voice and would like to continue the conversation. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add to her comment to say that the one thing that we have been doing at IMC is just starting with self. We said, this is a, this is a long journey here and the very first thing that we need to do is to start with self and we need to look at all structures within the association, everything that we do. And so I have been really just honored to, to, to see the willingness of everybody to just look at, look at themselves and how that has affected their, themselves and their work and to just do, do, do the hard work.
Thank you. Thanks for your leadership on this, Cindy, as well. And I do want to take a moment and, and talk about the task force if we could, and then we'll get back on topic. But I know that they're, you know, you're leading a task force and we have several sort of subgroups of that task force. It's a, it's a very large undertaking. And yes, we have agreed to, to start from the inside out. I think it's important both personally and organizationally. Some of you have, that who are on the call today have already volunteered or been in touch with either me or Cindy on this. And so I want you to know that you will hear more from us. And if you haven't heard back from us, give us another shout out. We're, we're, we're trying to keep up with, there's a lot of interest, which is wonderful. I know the past two days I have received some more emails and I will be following up over the weekend to try to get caught up on those and get the information to Cindy so that we can start getting our lists and our subgroups put together with their, their action items, let's say, and moving forward. But I, I so appreciate the outpouring from this community. I mean, last week we had several hundred people with us and the interest in wanting to be a part of this, both to contribute on a task force level and to continue to learn and wanting, encouraging us to continue the conversation and continue sharing the work. The community has been exceptionally kind and compassionate and patient and I appreciate that very, very much. So we'll go back to topic now, Cindy. That was just my little thing about the, about the task force, which I think are really, going to be really important, ongoing work.
What I will mention about the task force is that we've, we've looked, we're looking at all different areas. So we're looking at IMC as an association, we're looking at teacher education, we're looking at individual work, we're looking at how to continue to fund ongoing work that has to do with anti-racism and social justice. So there are a number of different areas that we're, we're going to be tackling at the same time and how to make this just an ongoing, an ongoing form of education for, for Montessorians. We, we want to make sure that teachers who are already in the classroom can get educated and that we don't roll out new teachers who are not race conscious.
Thank you for that. And we do have people who are interested. If you are interested, you can go ahead and put that in the chat. I'm going to put my email in here because you can email me directly if you are interested in participating in a task force initiative. And we are asking for people who, there's two things we're asking for. One, someone who actually has the time approximately three hours a week to contribute to this on an ongoing basis because we really want to do the work. And so that's what we're asking for that. We're also looking for people who are, could be used for resources that we can reach out to and, and use you as your time does allow and as your, as your areas of expertise could be shared. So, so both are important. So, and if you just want to be involved in more, getting more emails about the different things that we're doing, go to montessori.org and you can sign up to be on our email list as well. So I put my email in the, in the box and I'm happy to, to talk to you about that. And I see several people are, are interested. So great. And I just, like I said, feel free to email me directly and I'll get with Cindy and we'll come up with a master list and we will get this moving forward. We're very, very excited about the work, partially because, I'd be honest with you, when we went to write a statement, it's hot, it was hard to have words. It was hard to have words that weren't associated with action. It's hard to say words that seem almost empty and meaningless, even though they're heartfelt and even though they, you know, we as individuals in our organization believe in this work, it felt empty unless we attached it to action and that we actually follow through on that and are held accountable to that action. So appreciate Cindy's leadership in that area. And Tim also put his email in there, timselvin@montessori.org also.
You're getting a little overwhelmed. Hey, can I make a shout out for Rhiannon Isler's work to be added to everyone's reading list? If you don't know who she is or, or what she has said over her career, she makes a nice addition to the soup. And I, I put in her website and her, her name in the chat. I particularly love her book, Tomorrow's Children, For Those Who Are Educators.
Yeah. If I can piggyback on the, the thing that I love about Rhiannon Isler's books is that she talks about the horrific results of domination. And it is, it's that mindset that anyone could dominate someone else that gives rise to some of the practices of racism. And so being able to understand that, and it's something to me that is, is a piece that should be brought into the Montessori classroom regularly, that you, that you, you don't want to, you don't want to take control over someone else. And that, and that understanding peace education is also understanding that. And I love The Chalice and the Blade and I forget the other book that she wrote right on top of that, but they just really, really speak to the heart and help you to understand why human beings just should not have the right to dominate over others.
Yeah. And her positive vision of partnership as opposed to domination. And logical, economic, from a very positive perspective of this is what we can do to begin to shift things. Just another useful tool. Cindy, you're, you're blessed. Thank you.
I think we're blessed. But I, I, I also think that, you know, as many people get to know this work, and there are many people doing this work and much further along than, than we are organizationally. I think that it's really important to say that this isn't just about IMC and the Montessori Foundation, this is about the Montessori community. And we want, and that's why this invitation is open. This, no organization, I think, should be held accountable individually without all of us being part of this. I think that we just have to work together. We have to cross those bridges. We have to build the bridges and be in conversation. So I appreciate that we have lots of folks from many organizations represented here today and especially this whole thing about teacher education, because I really think that's where we have to, we have to start fairly quickly. And then we'll get to the curriculum and we'll get, well, we'll have all these simultaneous groups working on all of that. But unless we work with the adults, we can't, we just can't make the, the real systemic change that we need to make. So both pre-credentialed and post-credentialed opportunities.
Yeah. And a few people have been saying, I, I'm starting to get it, but, but now what? I'm starting to get it, but I- I'm starting to get it, but I don't know, I don't know what I need to do now, and I don't know how to change it. And I would suggest to you, and I mentioned this to Kathy, that we can't do a one-off or a two-off, that we need to be able to have ongoing education for people. And so, please, please keep looking at the website so that you can see what we're going to be continuing. I asked the board to, to get How to Be an Anti-Racist, which you cannot get in book form right now anywhere. I would say make friends with somebody who tells you they have that book and find out if you can borrow it. But you can get it via Kindle, and you can get it via audiobooks. And if you just don't have access that way, but you can YouTube. Ibram X. Kendi is someone who is a wonderful person to listen to, his Youtubes that connect with the books that he has written. And the book White Privilege, and I think that was in the chat, is another one, and to me, it's reading books on both, both ends of the spectrum. If, if you are not in tune with the, the situation that truly occurred with slaves, I suggest that you listen to the recordings from slaves that have to do with what happened during that period of time, and the stories of slaves. You can, you can access the stories, the written stories of slaves and the audio stories of slaves. The audio stories are through the Library of Congress. But it gives you, it gave me such a, a deeper understanding of what happened. I really only had what I knew from bits and pieces and movies that I watched. But to hear their voices and hear their words is something that is very interesting. And to go back through different aspects of history and to get the voices of people of color in, in that history are things that you can do in the background, and then we're gonna start to just continue to pull you through and to open your eyes, and some of it will be challenging work. And, and I, I think that, I am a student of Ursula Frush, and so peace education was a really big thing to Ursula, and a really big thing therefore to me. But we have to be able to dismantle racism by, by doing the hard work so that we can know how to make those changes and to really, really help our, our classrooms to be mantles of peace.
Beautiful. I think we, those of us who knew Ursula, who had the privilege of knowing Ursula, you were a lucky lady if you studied under her, I would say that. Lucky lady. We have just a few minutes left. If anyone would like to speak, and certainly Cindy will give you the, the final word in wrapping us up and looking at, you know, where we're going from here. Because I do think it's important that we recognize this is not a one-off, that we are in this for the long haul, and we're going to continue to hopefully study together and learn and work together. Oh, I see a hand, Carla.
Yes. All I wanted to ask is, I have a meeting with my, my district. I mean, we're all meeting together today as a town hall, the San Jose District. And I just was wondering, we're, we're going to be on board with Black Lives Matter, and so I was just wondering what were the single most important points for me to bring up in that meeting, Cindy? Because it's a huge organization, and, you know, I want to get the discussion going, but it's, you know, it's a different, it's different when you have a big organization, because you have to say the things that will be most powerful and most important. When you have a small school, then you can often get a lot more accomplished, actually. So I was just wondering what was the single most important thing to bring up in that town hall meeting that we have for the first time today?
You know, when I spoke with Kathy, one of the very first things that I said to her was that the IMC needs to start by doing the work, and to do the individual work, and, and to be willing to look at the structure of the organization. And so to me, the most important thing is to start there. Start with your organization, and the people who represent it need to do their work first, because then they'll be able to see how racism has seeped into their structures, into their policies. And to me, that, that's where you're going to be able to execute change. And I was so, I was so pleased with the courageousness of the IMC to say, we're there. We're, we're willing to do that work. And so I would ask that, are you willing to take that on to the depth that it challenges you?
All right, thank you. And I, they are willing to take it on, so I know they are taking it on. So we are, as a district, we're, we're taking it on. So we're going to start. So just keep, keep positive in, in your thoughts that we can make it, make it happen.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We do support that, Carla, and I will say that Cindy not only told us that we had to do the inner work, she gave us homework. She didn't just say, go figure it out. She gave us direction and guidance and some of the books that she has suggested, and us, and, you know, being able to read the books and come back and talk about that and how these things are. And even, I'm sure that we will be processing these meetings and what we're getting out, what we're learning from each other, and how we can apply that in our own lives and in our organization. So I, I think we have to be careful about being, you know, just put the, put, put the work on the person, but not give them guidance, right? So thankful we've had guidance, and that, that's helped a great deal.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think on an individual basis, you know, there's articles to read about working on your hidden bias. So people, you know, a lot of times people think, oh, well, I, I don't have any prejudice. And as Cindy said, we all do. And so, you know, I think that's, in addition to reading about anti-racism, looking at what hidden bias is and recognizing that we all have.
Yeah, I would say that I hope, and I know Sarah mentioned this before, but I hope that apart from getting things to read, that people will go through the Harvard Bias Test. There, there's more than one, and so I encourage you to do as much of it as possible, and to be as honest as I can. Because I think it's, it's eye-opening, it's heart-opening.
Christine.
It's also part of our homework. Yeah.
Christine Lowery had something. Christine?
I just, I wanted to go back to what Kitty said at the very, very beginning, almost an hour and a half ago, about sharing your story about, about the slogan Black Lives Matter, and you said, and then I, and now I get it. And I think what we all need to do is, once we feel like we, we get it, or that we're getting it, is to try to be as constantly vigilant as we possibly can with our own thoughts and the way that we interact with others and move through the world.
Thank you, Christine. I, I want to just piggyback on that for a minute, because I think that as we, the, the getting it isn't there. There's not a destination, right? It's, it's a, it's a journey, and we're gonna continue on that journey, because the work is, is immense. And as Cindy said, it's not gonna be undone overnight when we have over 400 years of abuse. So we have to be conscious of that, and I think as we start getting it, I want to really be clear that I think it's really important not to judge the people who, where they are on that part of the journey. That we are, at least, I truly believe that our best weapon, so to speak, is kindness and love. And I know that that's not the only answer. As Sarah said, you thought you just love everybody, and it's all gonna work out fine. I think unless we come at this work with compassion and kindness and love, we're adding to the problem. And if we are judging people who get things differently or don't get the things that we get, we're not giving them an opportunity. So we give people a hand up, not a push down. And we try to say, we're here, and we understand where you are. And we start where people are. Isn't that what we do with our children in the classroom? We start where they are. And that's a way of life. That's not just in this instance. But if we can practice that, nobody gets it perfect, we just practice it. We practice that every day, because there's a lot of unkindness around this issue in all areas. And so what, what can we do to add a piece of love and kindness to this?
Kathy, I want to piggyback on that for a minute. I, I think for those of us who have been or are in school leadership, it is also our job to create an organizational culture, whether it's in the classroom with students or among the adults, that's emotionally safe for people to reveal their racist glitches or be called on it in a, in a kind and compassionate way. That's, if we don't have organizational cultures where people can talk about this transparently, people won't be, be moved towards self-awareness, and they won't move toward revealing where, where they need support or be willing to be called out on, like, John, you just said that, you know. So part of this is, is very much about school culture and classroom culture, sort of the extension of grace and courtesy to make this level of self-awareness possible.
Yeah. Thank you. So Cindy, final words go to you, and we look to you for guidance and direction, and to many others of you who, who have lived this experience that, that the rest of us are learning about.
So your, your homework is, I like to give homework, sorry, Mike. Your homework is trying to get How to Be an Anti-Racist on some level, and white fragility, or white privilege, or witnessing whiteness, one of those. And that you go through the Harvard Bias Test series, and that you take those tests so that you can see how you compare. So I, I think that the, the information that we went through today about Black Lives Matter and about white privilege, that the, the piece that we need to be able to always fold through every part of this journey is that no one is the lowest common denominator. That we don't ever want anyone, any group of people, to be the lowest common denominator. And that as we go through life, that we need to flip that so that, so that there's only a one, and that no one is down at the bottom. And so we, we change it through cultural recontextual, cultural recontextualization. We deconstruct the thinking that we've had before, and the way that we have seen people before, and the way that we've seen them operate, and that we start to change that. That we look at the course of history, and that we start to change our thinking, which requires starting here first and being able to move from there and getting rid of that thinking and then replacing it with something else. And that within that, we start to learn the interconnectedness and the interrelatedness that we have with, with each other. And I think that's the piece that Montessori was really trying to, to get in the work that we do and the work that we do with the children. And so now, we need to change our values, and we need to change our course. And to know that no one's exempt, no matter what color they are. That this is the freedom struggle that we're all in together, every generation, every color, every people.
Thank you so much. On behalf of IMC and the Montessori Foundation, thanks for everybody for coming today, for showing up, for participating, for listening, and being willing and open to grow and learn. And I just so appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedules, because I know that COVID has not gone away. And we know that that is still an issue, so we will be doing that as well. We can do more than one thing at a time, but this, this is going to continue. Thank you for showing up. Thanks for being here. And Cindy and Sarah, Jonathan, Kitty, all of you who have volunteered to be on the task forces, thank you so much. And Mr. Selden, if you are still here, Tim, thank you for always providing us a platform that is based on a circle of equals. We so appreciate that, and that circle is growing every day. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Cindy.
See you next week.
See you next week.